Today is Monday, June 2nd. This is a regular Board of Education meeting. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. And Trystee Thompson, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Rebecca Chamblyss.
Here.
Melissa Dodge.
Here.
Carlos Harp.
Yes, notice.
Cindy Holder.
Here.
Mark Kimball.
Yes, notice.
Astera McAlpine-Taylor.
Here.
Gloria Thompson.
Here.
Public fundamental input. From public fundamental inputs to the operation of the Madison District Public Schools are an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment, as Sada said, at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the Board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the Board must fill out a request and give it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board of Education accepts comments made during public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. Did we receive many requests?
No, ma'am.
And did anybody else?
No.
Thank you. We will move on. Superintendent Perry.
Good evening, everyone. We are going to start tonight's awards a little differently. We have staff members that are retiring from the district, and I just want to take a moment to honor the staff members that we have leaving us this year and just to share some of their greatness with you. So can we have Lisa from Madison Early Childhood Center, honor our retirees from ECC, please?
Our first staff member would be Danielle Selfridge. Danielle is someone who has dedicated her time, talent, and heart to making a difference in the lives of so many and as you retire and begin a new chapter in your life. You've been a mentor, a leader, and a friend. Your commitment to Madison District Public Schools has been unwavering. Your journey attending Madison schools and also working in the district as a kindergarten teacher and reading interventionist for 27 years now. You've inspired countless students -- hopefully, I got the timeline right. You've inspired countless students, supported your fellow staff, and approached every challenge with a positive spirit and a smile. Your passion, kindness, and dedication have left a lasting mark on all of us. We are so grateful for the years you have spent sharing your talents, your wisdom, and your heart with this community. As you step into retirement, we know you will bring that same joy and energy into this next chapter. May it be filled with relaxation, adventure, and all the things you love most. You have earned it. On behalf of everyone here, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your hard work, for the memories, and for being part of the family. You started your journey in Madison District as a student, and now you're ending as a retiree. And we wish you nothing but the best in this exciting new chapter. Congratulations on your retirement. All right, Ms. Jabo. All right. Your dedication, passion, and heart have touched the lives of so many students and families over the years. You have not only taught lessons in reading, math, writing, science, and social studies, but you've also instilled important life skills, patience, kindness, and love for learning. Your classroom has been more than just a room. It's a place where students have felt safe, encouraged, and inspired. You've celebrated their successes, helped them through challenges, and created a foundation for them to grow and thrive. To say thank you doesn't seem like enough. Thank you for your years of service, 32, for your countless hours of preparation, for the care and attention you gave to every child, and for the way you supported your colleagues. You've been an incredible teacher, mentor, and friend. As you close this chapter and begin a new one, we wish you a retirement filled with happiness, health, and well-deserved relaxation. We hope you take the time to enjoy the little moments, pursue new passions, and reflect on the lives you've changed. Congratulations on your retirement, and from the bottom of our hearts -- you can see out here -- thank you for everything. You will be deeply missed, but we are excited for all that's ahead of you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Now we will have Principal Colley from Madison High School.
Ms. Sladzinski. Just some words from our staff. She is dedicated and hardworking. She goes above and beyond to ensure that her students succeed. Her passion for teaching and her care for her students truly makes a lasting impact. The way you handle so many responsibilities with Grace, ha-ha, in inspiring -- her first name is Grace, okay? We will miss how Grace sets high standards for her students and spins so many plates at school with energy and gusto. And you are such an essential part of our Madison family. You are patient, kind, and caring. You take time during seventh hour, even though it can be quite intense, to offer individualized guidance, support, and tutoring to our students to help them reach their goals.
Our staff also says, "You make us laugh every day. We don't know what we are going to do without you, without our hallway conversations, but we are so excited for your next journey because we know there's no way you're going to slow down." Thank you for your support throughout the years and always taking the time to help. Your patience, kindness, and dedication to our students over the years are unparalleled. And for me, Grace, ever since my first day here at MHS all those years ago, when you welcomed me to the Science Department, I've considered myself so lucky to have you, Crane and Volpe, because you were such strong, inspiring women as mentors. Thank you for all the invaluable advice and wisdom you've shared throughout the years to express my profound gratitude and admiration for you, your endless energy each and every day, and the spark that you're able to ignite in our students, fostering curiosity and a true love for science. We wish you a retirement filled with the same joy and fulfillment that you brought to your classroom every day. You will be greatly missed. Our picture before the speech.
All right. Our first student of the month is Zach Marshall. He is not here, so I'll just read a couple of the things that our staff had to say about him. Zach always brings joy to every room he is in. He is always positive and willing to help his classmates. He's a great example of a peer leader and model student athlete. And he's not here. I would have liked to have said this. One day, he came into the office signing in, and he said, "Good morning." And I said, "Zach, you're such a good boy." I said, "I hope that you continue to be a good man." He's just a good kid, so we're happy to honor him.
Next, we have Azari Bowens. Come on up. Oh, our core value this month is 1% better. This month's theme is exemplified by -- again, we're honoring ninth graders. Not sure if we mentioned it, but this powerful idea reminds us growth doesn't always have to come in giant leaps, but rather small, consistent improvements. So to give you some perspective, 1% better every day for 365 days is actually 37.78% better each and every year. So, from her teachers, Azari quietly does her own thing. She never seems to miss anything. She does things the first time she's asked and does them so well. She's an amazing student, consistently getting As on a roll, asks questions when necessary, and has shown a level of work quality that many students wouldn't be able to do until junior or senior level of high school. Azari is awesome to have in class. She came every day, rocking and rolling, ready to go from the moment she walked in the door. She's an absolute joy to have and set a great standard for others in her class. And finally, Azari is a great student who never needs reminders or redirection. Her work is always done to the best of her abilities and makes our class more than 1% better every day. Congratulations.
Thank you. Now we have Principal Jones from Wilkinson Middle School.
Hey, everyone. Tonight, we're going to honor two of our very special students. We are honoring our seventh graders. Let me go this way. I have Mr. Anthony Pupera with me again this month to honor our seventh graders. Our first one is Ms. Camille Mitchell. So Camille is our very special bunny, as we call her in the building. She's always moving around. Just a really, really joy to have in the building. She is our very bright and funny young woman, but she also takes the time to be very kind to others. You'll always find her socializing with her friends at lunch. She's doing different things. She's always making everyone around her at least 1% better. Mr. Pupera?
Thank you, ma'am. I can still remember the first time I met Camille at sixth grade orientation, beaming and full of smiles. Camille has perhaps the positivity and demeanor bar none of the building. I remember one time when I have the -- I've had the pleasure of sixth grade English and seventh grade science with her. In sixth grade, there was a moment where I complimented the class for just being a ray of sunshine. And there was this one young man who was having a cloudy day, and he was saying, "Everyone at my table is so distracting, Mr. Pupera." Then he got to Camille, and he's like, "No, never mind. Camille's pretty perfect, but anyway." And that's always stuck with me that there is not a single student who has ever said anything but the most glowing praise of Camille. She strives to make everybody 1% better because she reminds us all that no matter when the rain falls, it's just there to make us blossom taller each day. Our second student being recognized this month is Mr. Huang Bo. Come on up. Huang is new to our district this year. He started in seventh grade with us, and he is one of our English learner students. He has been a leader in every single class, from first hour to sixth hour, from his electives to his core classes. I have had several students who have told me that they think Huang is an inspiring student, and he pushes them to do better. They understand the hard work that he puts in every day. And he also brings out the best in other people. He is hilarious, in my opinion. And I don't know a day that Huang is not smiling and just asking people how they're doing. And I think it says so much that for someone who is the one taking on so many new experiences, he is making everyone else feel at ease around him. And I don't think that's 1% better. I think that's 100% better. Thank you, Huang, for what you bring to our building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Madison Elementary School.
Good evening. So at the elementary school, we typically rotate grade levels for choices for student of the month. But I especially look forward to June because also each month, we celebrate students who represent a specific characteristic according to our Capturing Kids' Hearts curriculum. Well, at the end of the year, every teacher gets to pick two students who have exemplified all of those characteristics the entire year. And then Tran and I also get to pick two students that we would like to honor as Exceptional Eagle of the Year. And we typically choose fifth grade because they've been in our school for the longest, and we generally know them a little bit better than the other grade levels. And we're going to be super sad to miss them. So I have two fantastic fifth graders to bring to you to celebrate this evening. I will start with Ms. McKenna Thresher.
When I thought about the qualities of an exceptional eagle, McKenna immediately came to mind. She is a natural leader and an outstanding role model for all of her peers. Her character shines through in everything she does. We can always count on her to make thoughtful, responsible choices and encourage others to do the same. McKenna consistently looks for ways to help those around her, demonstrating kindness, empathy, and a genuine desire to make a positive impact. Her upbeat attitude, joyful spirit, and warm personality are contagious. She is not only a dedicated, hard-working student, but also an even better friend. We are truly blessed to have had McKenna as a member of our Madison family. Her presence has made our school a better, brighter place, and we look forward to seeing where it will take her in the future.
Our next Exceptional Eagle of the Year is Joseph Cleveland. Come on up, Joseph. Joseph is so humble. He's going to hate this whole time that I talk about him. Our next Exceptional Eagle, Joseph, may not be the loudest voice in the room, but his quiet strength speaks volumes. He leads by example, showing his peers what it means to be respectful, thoughtful, and kind. And though he had some really big shoes to fill following in his older brother's footsteps, he has more than held his own, carving out his own path and making a name for himself through integrity and hard work. And although he may not have as big shoes or as big of a voice, he has just as big of a heart. He is a dependable student, a caring friend, and a devoted big brother, not only to his sister, but to all the younger eagles who look up to him. His steady presence and strong character make him someone others naturally admire and trust. Madison is a better place because he's been a part of it. While we will miss him dearly as he moves on to middle school, we are excited to see all of the amazing things the future holds for him. There is no doubt that he'll continue to soar. Thank you. And last but not least, we have our Madison Early Childhood Center.
First, we have Jasmine. Come on up.
Jasmine joined kindergarten this year with no prior school experience, but she quickly adjusted and embraced every moment with enthusiasm. She arrives each morning with a big smile and a positive attitude. She's ready to learn and connect with others. Jasmine quickly formed friendships and has shown a natural kindness toward everyone she meets. Her eagerness to learn and her strong work ethic have led to significant academic growth over the school year. She truly enjoys being at school and is noticeably disappointed if she has to miss a day or go home early. It has been a joy to watch Jasmine learn, grow, and thrive this school year. Congratulations.
Christian. All right, we have Christian here. According to Ms. Hukterp, there are not enough good things to say about Christian. He is smart and always on task. He is clever, kind, and caring. Christian is an amazing and inclusive friend to his classmates, always making room for others to play. Any teacher would be lucky to have him in their class. That means next year. I am true -- not only am I truly grateful, but the kindergarten team is truly grateful, Ms. Hukterp especially, that she was the lucky one to have you in her class. You are amazing, and every one of us is so very proud of you. Congratulations.
Ed, I'd just like to say congratulations to everyone, to the retirees. I wish you good health to enjoy that time off. If anybody would like to stay here, more than welcome. Otherwise, we will do a five-minute break. But before we go, I just wanted to tutor on a little bit because most of you won't hear it later. We had our graduation on Saturday. And while our graduating class was small, they got over -- correct me if I'm wrong -- $5.3 million in scholarship money for the 50 kids that stayed and worked hard. So we do prove ourselves regardless of what you hear. Our staff does work very hard to get these kids ahead. And so it goes unnoticed a lot, and those kind of things shouldn't. So with that, it is 6:25. We'll call a five-minute break.
34. It's been five minutes, correct?
Thank you. We are back in session. Next on the agenda is the administration report.
Okay, so today I have a special guest for you today. For the 24-25 school year, we received a grant called 23H and it basically focused on math literacy. And so we have Kelsey Kane. I mentioned her in one of my newsletters and how she presented with MDE this past year. And so Kelsey is here to share with you guys some of the impact that the 23H grant has had on our elementary students in the area of mathematics. So I am going to hand it over to Kelsey.
Welcome.
Thank you. You can hear me okay? All right. I just want to say thank you to Patricia for lending her time to me today. And it follows along really well, Cindy, with what you said earlier about celebrating. This is really about showing you the impacts that our classrooms are feeling because of the grant and because of our educators here at Madison Early Childhood as well as Madison Elementary. So the paper that you have in front of you, we will look at it more in-depth on the presentation. So if you want to set that aside, you can. But that'll be towards kind of the middle of our presentation today. This is something that I stand by and tell every student who I am in contact with about math. How to be a math person, be the person, do the math. And it really makes the kids laugh and breaks the discomfort of the age-old, "I'm not a math person." So it's just a fun thing that I was sharing. And this is the why. We all know this in some form, some version. Our statewide team at MAISA and the Early Math Task Force has put this together. We know that the purple line in the top chart is our Michigan 4th graders across 2017 to 2024. It's definitely noticing that dip over the pandemic. And then if you look at the bottom graph, we're noticing 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade over those grade bands and their proficiency in math. Michigan, these are Michigan students in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. We already know that our students are some of the lower-performing students on one performance test, the M-step. This is not going to be a focus on that because we have to do the other work to get them to get proficient on the M-step. So you'll see a lot of celebrations today with our other assessments and our other benchmarks. First up, sorry, I'm new to the buttons on this thing. This is the system that 23H has allowed us to put into place to support Madison. I would be the early math specialist in the light blue teal color. I attended all of those monthly, yearly, still attending it, tomorrow is our final meeting. Our ISD leaders at Oakland schools have been absolutely invaluable to us. Dana Gozen has been with me every week, supporting our staff and students. Our principals were involved at our monthly local leader meetings and this has really meshed well with our CCI team that attends Oakland schools. Also, we have our teachers, the integral part of this whole project. They are overlapping with the learning I'm doing. They're overlapping with learning that I'm providing as well as that they attend themselves. And everything is for our students. One of the things that 23H has brought to us that the Early Math Task Force really focuses on is that powerful learning for children must require powerful learning for educators. We have to shift the scales so that we are all learning together rather than doing one-off PDs so that our students aren't benefiting from that. We need a consistent change from what we've previously been doing. And so these are some of the things that we are working to change for our students. Moving away from the teacher at the front of the room, the Charlie Brown wah-wah-wah-wah, and really being responsive to students, helping them deepen their understanding, be flexible, have fun, have joy, playful, really letting them share their ideas and strategies and recognize mistakes and how they can choose to fix them. We really want this to be about our children in every way. It's also about how we shift as educators. We are looking to be leaders who are responsibly, excuse me, responsibly facilitating sense-making, making sure that we are learning every day with our students, being involved, engaging in the why, being a student of our students. And you'll see evidence of that later on from some of our specific grade levels who have really taken that on and done amazing work with their students. We also really want to encourage, the final note there, that educators are engaged in the messiness with their colleagues every day. It's okay to be messy, it's okay not to be perfect each day and to have those doors revolving so that we can all learn from each other. So our overarching goal of this entire project is to support children becoming knowers and doers and really identifying themselves as math people. How do they see themselves in relation to mathematics, their world? They're not not math people, they're math people. And how does it affect them and how do they go about their daily lives? So this is where I bring up the yearbook that you have in front of you. So in this presentation, which I'll provide afterwards, the left-hand side of your screen, the yellow, is our Madison-specific yearbook that you have in front of you. The right-hand side is the front cover and if you click that link, it's to the entire state. So the entire state came together and put these yearbook pages together for our learning. These are our students and we got to highlight them and share them with the entire state. It was an amazing celebration that we had our statewide representatives. The person who funded this grant sat at the table with me. I will note that Ms. Perry was the only superintendent in the state to attend, which was very heartwarming for me. And just seeing and knowing that we have that support behind us was recognized at the state level. That was awesome. So in the left-hand side, the purple, you see a 3rd grade classroom and the student is leading the work the whole time. It's our Number Corner routines and she is going in-depth and really looking to guide her peers with the teacher standing by. Our middle is Sherri Jabo, who we just celebrated. This is her classroom. She has done such an incredible job incorporating this into her classroom and her students cannot miss Number Corner, they remind her often. And then our 4th grade classroom in the blue, they were applying their math concepts learned in Number Corner, which the 23H grant brought us, in a game. So you can see how engaged they are, how excited they are to be seeing this and they're participating together. We also highlight our teachers and recognize the math special that we were able to have at MES this year. The teachers are, excuse me, the students are really learning to foster joy with math and math games. One of them said, "No, Ms. Kane, there's not math." I said, "Did you just add, subtract, multiply?" "Oh, no, I was just counting." "Okay, all right, if you don't think it was math, that's totally fine, you were excited, that's great." And then we also have had our teachers give a lot of their time this year outside of school hours to really make it more seamless for the coming years. So these are just some accomplishments that you probably don't hear of often. We had a statewide team visit our district. There are many, many, many schools and districts in this program and they chose ours to come to, which was amazing. Our Oakland Schools team has created a promotional video of our teaching. This will be available to us probably in August. It's a long time coming, but we're really excited to share that with you when it's ready. Our 3rd and 4th grade team participated in planned-do-study act cycles. This is the messiness. Every single week, they were talking with each other. "Okay, we have to work on our wait time, all right, how are we going to do this? What did you do? How did that happen?" I was noticing the conversations in the hallway. They did not like it when I called them out because I did it often, but they were really excited and you'll see that there was an impact on their students. We also had students who were interviewed about math. They indicated growth, awareness, and joy. And all of our students participated in number sense routines all year. So this is a big celebration. I'm not sure if any of my kindergarten teachers stayed because they have heard this many, many times. Last school year, we had students at the end of the year, we had 54.7% of students on grade level. This year, we have 71% on grade level on the NWEA. This is not just meeting their growth, those kids have also met their growth, but they are saying things like, "I like to talk to my friends about math, I'm good at math, I can play with numbers now." So direct quotes out of the mouths of babes from our kindergarteners. And an example of the calendar that they have discussed is in the bottom right corner. So adding to that, not only are 71% of our students at or above grade level, 80% of our students have met their growth. So we are not only meeting the needs of our students who are at grade level, but 80% of our students are also meeting their growth, which is incredible. The teachers have really increased their ability to support that dialogue and really open the kindergartners to having an amazing math experience that hopefully will carry through in our district. In 1st grade, we have 51% of our students meeting or exceeding their growth. And I'd like to highlight that middle pink sentence. "My teachers care about me and make sure I know what I am doing in math." I don't know if we could ask for more. Their teachers care about them and they know what they're doing and that's a really confident way of sharing that. So I'm going to move a little quicker through these just so you see the highlights and you'll have the opportunity to So I'm going to move a little quicker through these just so you see the highlights, and you'll have the opportunity to look at more in depth later if you so choose. In our second grade, we have 70% of our students meeting or exceeding their growth goals. They took on Number Corner in second grade. We only have one second grade math teacher who teaches math to the whole grade level. However, the other two teachers said, no, let's do this. I'm in and also participated in 20 minutes of Number Corner and Number Sense routines with their students. And then the camera crew was so impressed when we videoed one of the second grade classrooms that they were discussing it the rest of the day and called me on their way home to ask more questions. They were really excited and engaged. In third grade, this might be the reason that I am reinvigorated in life and in teaching. One of our third grade teachers was close to retirement. She decided not to, and her quote is at the top of this page. Teaching math has been more enjoyable this year than in all my previous years' teaching. As a coach, as someone who's supporting teachers, I can't say enough about how great that felt. But more importantly, how amazing that was for her students to have that impact and that feeling. They, this team worked really hard this year on wait time, giving those ti, those students time to think. Well, we also had to teach them how to think because they first told us to stare at them. Well, yeah, when my teacher's not talking, we stare. Eh, no. Now in May, they're saying if I get it wrong, she's not mad. I need to think. If she's paused, I don't know right away. I can think, we can talk with each other and listen. And those are really good frameworks from number sense routines that have come through this year. Our fourth grade team had an amazing experience with our visit from the statewide team. They had previously been in the classroom this year and did not recognize it because of the amazing shifts in instruction and student dialogue. They didn't believe me that it was the same students in the same classroom at first. We also have two students who take their Number Corner conversations to the bus daily. The bus driver has said that he's had to ask them to sit down and get quiet because they're so excited about math, which is just incredible. And our fifth grade, this was awesome. During our visit with the statewide team, I couldn't find her, our representative. She was standing outside the fifth grade classroom, listening to their conversations and their collaboration and was overjoyed just knowing that that was happening and that our teachers are really there having those conversations and getting messy with one another. They also took on new learning with at times 30 students in their class, which we know is daunting to take on new things, let alone have that many students in their classroom. So we really wanted to recognize them for their hard work this year with a challenging curriculum. Math in fifth grade is no joke, and they are really taking it on. And all of their conversations surround their students. So these are ways that we see growth. I'm going to skip this so that you can take a deeper look at that and think more about that and have conversations about it at a later date. But I want to let you know, this is how we start our day by ending our announcements by saying every day is a great day to be an eagle. And the amount of cause that I hear afterwards, we're really trying to foster an amazing community at MES and ECC. And these are just some of the ways that our students and teachers have engaged this year.
I just want to say thank you. This is very informative. I really, really appreciate you bringing us more good news.
Yeah, absolutely. And we will bring the video to you hopefully in August or September when it's ready.
I just want to say thank you to Kelsey and also Dr. Hemmeyway because this work was a lot. I think it was like once a month or maybe once every two months, the math and the ELA lead, they will go to Oakland schools and they will work together. And I think that's very powerful because usually on the K-5 level, it's all about literacy, reading literacy. And we never touch on math, but then when we get to middle school or high school, we say, hey, why these kids don't understand algebra? Because they didn't have the foundation. So I just want to say thank you to both of you guys because it was a lot of work, Kelsey. Working with teachers and working with students can be very difficult, but you hung in there, so I really appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And that is the end of the administration report.
The consent agenda is not, the others listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any member of the board or any citizen requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will become the first item of business under the Board of Education action items portion of the agenda. Tonight's consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the Board of Education for the regular meeting, May 19th, 2025. Approval of May 2025 expenditures in the amount of $1,276,489.95. And approval of the personnel report submitted by Human Resources on June 2nd, 2025. Need a maker and support, please.
Madam President.
Trustee Thompson.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend, I'd like to make a motion that I recommend the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Trustee Chambliss. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Kristara McAlpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
I also would open this up at this time. Can we add to discussion our new and continuing business 5C? We need an additional school board meeting on the 16th, correct?
Yes.
It's a finance meeting, it's required. I know I had. So it would be C, and I need a maker just to add it to the agenda.
I'll make that motion, Madam.
Trustee Thompson. McAlpine-Taylor, support, sorry. Any discussion? This is just to add it as 5C. Be an action item. There's a maker and support, I'm going to add it as 6E, of course. All right. And support agrees.
Yes.
So we will move it to from 5C to 6E. No other discussion, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Kristara McAlpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Next up is facility usage, new and continuing business. Yes, please.
That was on the agenda to discuss the last meeting when we had a conversation about the facility usage. And I asked you guys to take it home, to think about it, and see if you guys had any feedback from us. And also to give you guys an opportunity, if anyone wants to go on a tour, to kind of discuss that. So was, is there any feedback about the facility usage?
Any trustees? McAlpine-Taylor, please.
So I apologize, I cannot take a tour till Friday because, you know, because there's the work situation. However, so I would like to set that up. And I think we do need a continued discussion to see how to best use our facilities. And whether that is looking at ECC and seeing if there's a different way to readjust where they're located or how we do it. I just, for cost savings, I still believe that we need to look into this and to see how that we can reduce our costs in order just to continue thriving.
So what I hear you saying is that you want this like as a continued open discussion item on the agenda?
Very much so.
And I do have some updates without putting my newsletter about facilities. Just some recommendations.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? At this time, so unless you guys have something you'd like to add?
Oh, no, we're good.
All righty. Next up, board member payout. Ah, our friend Ebony.
So this was brought to the agenda because we do have new board members, and you probably are not aware of how we pay you guys out. So you guys get a small stipend for coming to the board meetings, and we try to pay them out twice a year. So in July, we pay out for anyone who attended from January till June. And then you would get your next payout in January for attendance from July to December.
We get paid the end of June. It's the end of the school year. That is a encumbrance of that school year, so it's before the auditions.
But we're not saying we're not paying you. We're processing it in June, but you may not get it until the first week of July. So it's going to be processed in this fiscal year. You just won't get it until July. So.
The first week in July.
The first week in July. So I need to make sure that everyone has a W-9 on file. Do you know the rate is per meeting? Forty-five dollars per meeting. So if you do not have a W-9 on file, I can email it to you. You can fill it out and then bring it back up to the board office. So I just wanted to let you guys know you will receive a payout in July for this fiscal year.
The encumbrance will be on this fiscal year. Because we had that discussion, we don't want to kick that can.
Right.
That makes no sense. Anybody else? All righty. Next on the agenda, approval of the OCSBA amendment to the bylaws and resolution. The 2526 MHSAA, Michigan High School.
The next page, I printed wrong. Right there, the bylaws is there. Yep.
Oh, all right. This is membership resolution. Okay. Approval of the OS, OCSBA amendment to the bylaws and resolution. Each year, Oakland County School Board Association, wait a minute. Oh, I skipped. Sorry. Because I see what you're saying now, April 1st, got it. Each year, the Oakland County School Board Association Government Relations Committee develops legislative priorities which guide the creation or amendment of OCS. Resolutions are drafted by the Resolutions and Bylaw Committee and aligned where applicable with Michigan Association of School Boards or National School Board Association positions. Follow, following review by the OCSBA Board of Directors. The proposed new or amended resolutions are shared with member districts for consideration and approval. It is recommended the Board of Education support the proposed new and amended resolutions presented by the Oakland County School Boards Association for adoption as the association's official legislative position. I need a maker and support, please.
Madam President?
Trustee Thompson.
I'd like to make a motion, the Board of Education support the proposed new and amended resolutions presented by the Oakland County School Boards Association or OS, OCSBA for adoption as the association's official legislative positions.
Thank you, support?
I'll support.
Trustee Chambliss, any discussion?
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Kristara McAlpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay, now, MHSAA. The 2526 MHSAA resolution has been provided for the Board of Education approval. This resolution must be signed and submitted to the MHSAA by August 1st, 2025 to maintain the district's eligibility for MHSAA postseason tournaments and access to associated benefits, including accidental medical and concussion gap insurance coverage. Approval of the resolution affirms the district's commitment to adhere to all MHSAA standardized rules and regulations. A lapse in membership may result in the loss of eligibility and disruption of services. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the 2526 MHSAA membership resolutions as presented, authorizing continued participation in MHSAA activities and services. Need a maker and support, please.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2526 MHSAA membership resolution as presented, authorizing continued participation in MHSAA activities and services. Will support?
Trustee Thompson will support. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Kristara McAlpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next up, appointment of key Grace Academy board members. Key's Grace Academy is a public school acad, academy authorized by Madison District Public Schools. The current number of positions of this public school board is five. The term of Dr. Raimi Alasashi expires June 30th, 2025. The Board of the Academy recommends reappearance to a three-year term, which expires June 30th, 2028. The term of Edward Bajoka expires June 30th, 2025. The Board of the Academy recommends reappearance for a three-year term, which expires June 30th, 2028. It is recommended the Madison District Board of Education approve reappearance of Dr. Raimi Alasashi and Edward Bajoka for reappearance to a three-year term, which expires June 30th, 2028. Need a maker and support, please.
Madam President?
Trustee Chambliss?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the reappearance of Dr. Raimi Alasashi and Edward Bajoka for reappearance to the three-year term, which expires on June 30th, 2028.
Trustee Thompson, you support? Nathan?
Sure. I just want to be sure that the new board members understand how this authorization works for charter schools. And to see if you guys have any questions, you can ask now or we can meet later to discuss.
Well, do you understand what we're doing?
I think you told me a little bit about it when I first.
I'm going to put it on the record.
So I was actually going to answer, I was like, because I don't know these people. I'm like, Superintendent Perry, do you, do you agree?
So yes, basically how the authorization works is that we kind of have a partnership. We kind of meet once a quarter to make sure that everything is going okay, that they're up to code with all their reports with MDE. And then as an authorizer, we receive all of their funding and we keep 3% of it. And so we're kind of like, I wouldn't say a manager, more so an authorizer. So Nathan and I, that's the manager, Kalasho, we meet quarterly and we kind of have conversations. And so he, I support what he asks me to support as long as he brings proof. So he, I submitted some of the documents or literature about the two candidates. And so these two individuals were already on the board. Unlike us, they don't vote because it's not a city, they have to appoint individuals. So these two individuals are already on the board. So yes, I support.
That's what I wanted to know.
Anybody else? I will just say, I must have been absent from the board. I know this was about the time that I happened to be up at Mackinac City with my family. And I have known Mr. Bajoka for decades. And so he is one of my nephew's best friends. So I would say with all enthusiasm that I would support him. And with that, if there were. And with that, if there is nothing else, we'll do roll call vote, please.
Chambliss? Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Chris Dara McAlpine Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next up, approval of individual contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Individual contracts for key district personnel expire on June thirtieth, 2025. In order to ensure continuity of leadership and operations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, it is necessary to issue and secure individual employment contracts for the following positions. Director of Transportation, Bus Drivers, District Nurse, Director of Food Service and Transportation, Facility Manager, Business Specialist, Director of Specialized Student Services, Director of Business and Finance, Assistant Superintendent. The terms and conditions of these contracts will remain the same as those in place for the twenty-four, twenty-five school years with no change in salary. Securing these contracts in a timely manner will help retain experienced staff, ensure the smooth operation of district services, and support effective planning for the upcoming year. Approval for the issuance of individual contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for the listed person effective July first, 2025. I need a maker and support.
Madam President?
Trustee Thompson?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the issuance of individual contracts for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year for the listed personnel effective July first, 2025.
I'll support.
Trustee Chambliss, discussion? Nothing? Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Chris Dara McAlpine Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next up is the Superintendent twenty-four, twenty-five evaluation.
Five, sixty.
Oh, my goodness, see? Too many notes. Um, next up is, um, having our finance meeting on June sixteenth at six P M here. So it'll be a regular or a special? Regular. Okay. I need a maker and support.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
I make a motion that we add an additional June meeting on June sixteenth, 2025, a regular board meeting at six P M.
A second.
Thank you. Trustee McAlpine Taylor? Support. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Mark Kimball?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mc- Chris Dara McAlpine Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now, Superintendent twenty-four, twenty-five evaluation.
So, good evening, I am passing out a tool for you guys to use as I go through my presentation. Once I'm done presenting, Pam is going to take over and walk you guys through how to calculate the scores because I just want to make sure I'm out of that. So this year I am trying something different. I can email this to you guys. Um, usually when I do my evaluations, it's like a huge portfolio, but everything is digital now and we want to save money, so we're going to do a digital version. And I do want to point out that I am choosing to have this publicly because I do have the option to hold my evaluation in closed session, but I don't have anything to hide, so I have greatness to share. So here we go. Um, so basically what you guys have is an evaluation tool and each tool, we're going to go through each category. So if you can turn to page four. I tried to create goals around each component and then as the year go on, I present evidence to you guys as to how, um, I have accomplished that goal. Once I get done, you guys can select your rating and/or ask any questions if you have any. So, component one is visionary leadership. And I am going to discuss how I accomplished my goal for this school year. So I think for the first thing, when you are a superintendent, every school district is governed by a school improvement plan. That's what we used to call it back in the day. Now we have something called the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, which is, um, a school improvement plan, but it's, it's more purpose. So we have two goals as a district. One is to increase our math and ELA scores and another one is around culture and climate to make sure that we provide that environment for our students. Click on each one? Oh, wait, like, there is a link for each one of these.
Just to reiterate, we went through these after her last evaluation and said, okay, this is her next benchmark. So we will do that soon after this is done. Um, obviously things change, so priorities will change as well.
So for our MYKIP process as a curriculum task force, each building has a school improvement leader, but that new name is MYKIP. So I'm just going to reference MYKIP. And what we do is as the year go on, we have to put it, put in different ways of how we attempt it to accomplish and achieve our goals. So this right here, once you guys have access to it, you are more than willing to look through it. Each tab represent what each building has done to achieve our goals. So for ECC, you can see, if you scroll down, um, we have like twenty-eight different activities. And then you click on each tab, MES. Scroll down, we have about sixty-six activities. WMS, forty-one, MHS, forty-four, and the district, we have about six. So that's five, that's what we do as a district. So for MYKIP, in order for us to be in compliance, each one of these activities have to be uploaded to the database. So most districts have a MYKIP coordinator, but I'm doing that all on my own. So we're getting it done, though. Next, we have our curriculum task force, which meet once Saturday a month. We have our school culture task force that started out during the school year, but due to funding, we kind of had to cut it, but we are trying to write it back into our federal funds so we can have that going on. Building principals, I conduct walkthroughs with the building principals and we take the evaluation tool, go into classrooms. I ask them to see me to, let me see two teachers that are really performing and two teachers that may need some improvement. And we talk through that so we can make sure that we're on the same page with assigning ratings. Because I want to know that your effective is the same as my effective or your need and development is the same as mine. So we usually do that around January or February. We also have monthly principal meetings where we have conversations about what's coming up, things we want to enforce. And you get, you guys will have access to this. So what I did was instead of printing everything, you guys have actually access to my drive. So here represents a meeting agenda for every month that we had for our building leaders. And if you click on one, you can see different things that we discuss. So for example, in October, uh, we always start with good news, we talk about website updates, we talk about enrollment numbers, teacher evaluations. So these agendas change based on the need of the month. But that's a way for us to have open dialogue. We can check in, they tell me concerns they may have and we as a administration office tell them concerns we have. Um, on our level, it's hard to meet with principals during the day because they have to run their buildings. So we are thankful that they stay after right before the board meeting and we discuss a lot of leadership goals there. And we have our bi-weekly cabinet and directors meeting, same thing. You guys can click on that, you have access to my drive and it has all the agendas there. We have two different types of meetings. We have cabinet, which is everyone inside the board office. And then every other week, sometimes some business just needs to be handled amongst directors, so we rotate back and forth. And then last but not least, in terms of being a visionary leader, I do have nurse check-ins once a month. Um, sometimes once a month, it depends on the, the issues that are at hand. So here, I make sure I document everything. So if you look through here, these are some of the things that we discussed in April. One of the big concerns that we have was for summer school, making sure that we are ready to receive our summer school students. And as you guys know, sometimes we have students that, um, have different issues that we need to make sure we are accommodating. So that's that. And I will give you guys, are there any questions about component one? Or do you guys need me to expand on anything about being a visionary leader? If you guys can take your time and choose a rating before we move on to the next one. Page four. When you're in class, when you're done, put your pencils down so we know we can move on. Guys can leave comments if you want and you can return that to me, I will greatly appreciate it, I like the feedback. We're going to move on to component two. Oh, that's me. Okay, we're on policy and basically, um, my goal is to make sure that I follow the rules and make sure we are in compliance in terms of everything that we do. So some of the things that we do, we have done this year is AI guidance. We have started that work and as you guys know, ChatGPT and all these other AI platforms have been an issue in a lot of the classrooms. This right here, at our last PD, we had our AI team draft policy. So we have staff members from across the district and they shared this, uh, was it April? No, the last PD in May. And we are probably about seventy-five percent to eighty percent done with our AI guidance. This is a timeline, we started this work in November and we are still moving forward. So hopefully we will have policy or guidance, not just for students, but also for staff. Because, um, going to different conferences, we learned that a lot of staff members are going to, not our staff members, but teachers are going to AI looking for lessons and not really reading through the lessons to make sure it's appropriate for students. And then you go in the classroom and you're like, okay, um, I don't think I should be teaching this. So we have guidance for teachers as well. Um, we, I have also led Board of Education study sessions to make sure everyone is up to date on various changes in the education world. We are also in the process of MEA negotiation language. And if you click on that, it's just ha- you don't have to click on it, though. It just has a list of all the agendas that we, when we met, we started this last year. And this year we are finishing the last little bit of it. We have also updated policy that has not been updated in the district since sometime like nineteen ninety-eight. So it's a long process and we are still working on that. Um, in the absence of the Board of Education Secretary, I have made sure that every agenda was posted, created. All of these board packets have been created by me and as well as the board action items, as well as keeping up with the website. I have Key's Grace quarterly check-ins, we have monthly union meetings. We never want to be hit with a grievance, so we always try to meet with each union once a month so they can share their concerns. As well as MHSAA, as you guys know, we don't have an athletic director, so myself and Ricky Malik has been taking on that huge role. And we have been in compliance the whole year, so. Are there any questions on that, component? If not, if you guys can rate me accordingly and put your pencils down when we're done, we'll move on to component three. Should I wait for trustee McAlpine Taylor or?
I'm not sure that she's scoring. She is scoring, so give my hand a break so we can wait. You can just give me a second. If you want. Oh, we lost one. She'll be right back, she just found her job. She just ran to the restroom. Say, say, well, let me see if I'm not saying. These are my kids' Christmas stockings. Oh, there you go. They all are. They look like, oh, they're delicious. Women's.
Thank you for rating me on component two. The next one is component three. I do want to point out that most districts do have a curriculum coordinator and that is yours truly right here. So let me explain what I've been doing. In terms of instructional leadership, we work really hard with our curriculum task force. Once again, that's a link to all of our agendas. Some of the things that we discuss is pacing, common assessments, just instructional strategies that can help improve our test scores on growth levels as well as proficiency level. We are also, well, I'm also a part of the teaching and learning with AI community. So we can make sure that we are up to date with that. Once again, we, as a district, most districts have an ESL, ELL coordinator. That is for the individuals who have, um, students who come in who speak English as a second language. That is something that I take on as well. And if you click on that link, that is a link to agenda items that we meet, when we meet as a team. So I have K five meetings, I mean, K twelve meetings with lead, building leads. And we just talk about things that we can do to improve our program. Then this past, this year was the first year. So on a K twelve level in the past, we were administering growth assessments. So all districts have to have a growth, growth assessment. But the problem was the NWEA assessment was not aligned for grades eight through twelve. So NWEA is not formatted like SAT or PSAT. This year was the first year we switched our growth assessment for grades eight through twelve to Horizon. And that basically is similar to SAT, PSAT. If that's the assessment that we are determining proficiency on, then we need to make sure we give our kids access to that type of assessment. I also created a distant, district-wide testing calendar as well as I am the district-wide testing coordinator. And if you click on district-wide testing coordinator, you will see agendas. Each building has a lead, so when it's time for testing, we make sure that we have meetings to check in and say, hey, are you ready? What supports you need? Are all the students enrolled? So on and so forth. And same thing, we do a lot of instructional walkthroughs to look at what teaching and learning looks like. I think that sometimes our building principals are forced to be operational leaders. And in Madison, we really want to build instructional leaders and that's one of our goals and that's something we've been working on. In terms of quarterly pacing guides, when we meet for a curriculum task force, we try to make sure we have those all aligned so that we can make sure we're teaching the same thing at the same time. So if you get transferred from one fifth grade class to another, you should be on that same pacing. We also have a common district goal where we have at least sixty percent of our students show growth on the NWEA assessment from fall twenty-four to twenty-five. We know that goal is low and our goal is to push that up. And we're gonna talk about that later when we look at growth assessment. As well as all the teachers were a train on effective feedback. So I reached out to Oakland Schools in order to grow our building principals into instructional leaders. They need to know how to have those courageous conversations. So Oakland Schools sent out a representative to meet with our principals to say, hey, when you're sitting down with a teacher, what are the questions you ask to help lead to instructional growth? And I thought that was real powerful for our teacher, our principals, because sometimes it's hard to have those courageous conversations. So that is instructional leadership. In summary, are there any questions?
Thank you. Um, so you wanted at least sixty percent of the students to show growth. Did sixty percent show growth?
So TBD, to be, well, TBC is coming up in the next couple of slides.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, sorry.
So what, basically how the evaluation works is that um, eighty percent is, is it eighty percent? Yeah, eighty percent is on the tool and then twenty percent is on meeting academic growth goals. So I hold myself accountable the same way teachers and building principals. So when that time comes, you'll get to see how we did. Any other questions about instructional leadership? Okay, if you guys can assign me a rating, that would be greatly appreciated.
So I always want to make sure that Madison District Public Schools is represented in the community as a, the amazing district that it is. So in terms of communication and community relations, I try to attend all events that's hosted by the city. Juneteenth, I attended last weekend, last year, and this year they asked me to be the keynote to open up the event this year. So I'm really excited about that. We try to bridge the relationship with the city of Madison Heights, as well as the police chief, with the mayor. We just try to have a better presence in the community because at one point we did not look as well. So, any questions about community relations?
The newsletter, it did not start this year, or did it, in full? I know, as far as bringing it to us every Friday.
It started this year.
So, so that would be a part of what you have improved on this year? That was in response to some of our communication discussions last year. The student perception surveys were a new addition as well. So these are, are there any more? I'm looking at the list, because I know we did have discussions about how we could communicate better between the board and the community.
One of the reasons, I think one of the things you guys recommended last year that, was that I shared the newsletters that I sent you guys on Facebook, but sometimes that, those newsletters have information that we shouldn't make public, so that's one of the reasons why I did not share those on Facebook this year.
Was Supes with the soup this year?
No, that was last year.
That was last year, okay. Well, I was picturing Wilkinson, but I wasn't quite sure.
It was the flop, though, so we didn't do it this year.
It was still an effort, though.
I know.
You showed up, that's what matters. You said the, I'm sorry. President Holder.
Me, okay. I didn't know you were talking to...
Sorry, real quick, you said the carnival brought in twenty-two thousand?
Yes, twenty-two thousand dollars, and last year we only brought in fourteen thousand dollars.
That's the highest I've ever heard of, the highest, previous to that was ten thousand, and then we did the beer and wine tent, and that was terrible. Last year was fourteen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And now we're at twenty-two?
Yes.
That's amazing.
Yeah, and the owners recognized us, they really appreciated the community, so thank you to the community that came out and supported. They thought our kids were amazing. Thanks to the Madison Heights Police Department, we do have asked them to bring the reserves, so, and they were there all day long. Their, their presence, I think, really made a difference, and I think it's just going to continue to grow from here.
Sorry.
Next, we're going to talk about organizational management and how I accomplished this goal, and some things that, I'm going to be honest, I need to work on. In terms of management, we, our principal meetings, we definitely had a lot of conversations about making financially responsible decisions in terms of making purchases. We have our monthly MEA meetings. Once again, I think the teacher union, well, I know the teacher union is the largest union that we have, so I think during those monthly meetings at seven-thirty in the morning, we were able to have conversations about plans and how we're going to move forward. The weekly cabinet meetings definitely gave us time to have these fiscally responsible conversations. Quarterly meetings with Keys Brace, we have financial check-in meetings with the Board of Education that we started, as well as the Financial Task Force. I am a strong believer that I did not get us to this place financially on my own, so I can't pull us out on my own. So in those Financial Task Force meetings, we asked president, or representatives from each union to have a look in the budget, and I think that sometimes as teachers or people on the outside of our office, the way they think of school finance is not necessarily how we can run it, so they, they were able to get an in-depth understanding of, okay, if these funds come in for a grant, we have to use those funds for that grant, and we can't transfer it. So if we have fifty thousand dollars for a grant, I can't say, oh, I'm going to put this in teacher's salary. It doesn't work like that. So I think that was a huge eye-opener, as well as some of the grants we applied for. This year, we applied for the thirty-one double A funding, and when I say "we," I don't want you guys to think that it's a team, it's me, Mr. Andra, Kat, Ebony, Pam, it's us. Like, we are in the thick of it, applying for these grants, trying to find new funding for the school district. Once again, most districts don't have a grant, most districts do have a grant coordinator, but we can't afford that, and I think that's something really powerful about the team, is that we're willing to step in and do whatever we need to do for our students and for our staff. So those are some of the grants. Also, we had the Hidley Rollback, as well as the Seeking Fund. And same thing, it's the team, it's us. We don't have a, a legal department that can hit this stuff. It's all of us coming together saying, hey, let's figure this out, let's contact legal. And it's difficult sometimes, because, you know, it's like, we don't know what we don't know, but the fact that we actually step out and we apply brings a lot of money to the district, and I'll show you guys that later. So that is it on organizational management. One of the things I do want to work on next year is just having, now that we have staff that has been in the district for a year, our Director of Business and Finance has a lot of experience now, now we know what conversations to have, and we know when to have these conversations. So that's one of the learning things, one of the things that I learned this year is that, okay, I need a timeline, like, these are the questions I should be answering, and these are the answers that I need to determine if we're making fiscally responsible decisions. Questions, comments? Okay, if you guys can assign your rating. And last but not least is Component Six, Professionalism and Ethics, and we're going to talk about that. So some of the things that supports why I achieved this goal is I attend the Michigan Association of Superintendent Conference every year, or this year in Traverse City. I also make sure I am present at all Oakland County Superintendent meetings, so we have at least ten, no, not ten, maybe seven meetings a year where we come together as superintendents, and it's just a great way for us to get to know what's going on in other districts, and sometimes see that, hey, what's happening in Madison is not just in Madison, it's across Oakland County, and I think that that's huge. Also, we have attended the Oakland County School Board meetings, as well as, I was invited this year for the first time to the Urban Superintendent Conference, and that's basically an association where we have all urban superintendents, and it was like a female empowerment conference where all expense was paid, and it was definitely a learning experience. Dr. Cook Robinson, the Superintendent of Oakland Schools, is now over that program, so she invited me, so it was very powerful. We also was, I was also invited to a think tank experience that I was not able to attend, but Pam, Representative Madison District Public Schools. Also professionalism in terms of any type of Freedom of Information Act request, I am the one that does all that, so I make sure we get all the information out, and I am excited to say, I'll see how excited I am to say this next year, I just enrolled into a doctoral of education program in leadership, so hopefully that can help me become a better superintendent. Thank you, I'm going to need all the support. Any questions about professionalism and ethics? If you guys can assign a rating? Okay, so that's, that's the end of the tool, but I do have a couple of accomplishments I do want to discuss and share with you guys over the year. We were able to close out our bond this year, we are starting the floorwork at the high school. I also started, or added some class to our, to the H, the MSBO Human Resource Certification. We have additional funding and grants, and I'm going to show you a sheet on that. The Metro Program was a huge success this year, I think that it brought so much energy back to the district, and our students, just having them and seeing how happy they are means a lot. We had an increase in enrollment for the first time in the last, what, six years? And throughout the year, we only had one teacher vacancy, and that says a lot. We usually have, districts have more than one teacher vacancy, and that vacancy was only for like two months of the school year, but the principal did step in, we put the kids on different online platforms to kind of bridge the gap for that learning, so that was some accomplish, those were some accomplishments. Also, the Class of 2025 earned five-point-six million dollars in scholarships. That is amazing to have only fifty kids in the graduating class. We had zero findings in our twenty-three, twenty-four audit, and that was under our new Business Director, Director of Business and Finance, Ebony Thompson, who was new and came in and just picked right up and got everything going. Our GAD Audit under Pam Vermiglio had zero findings. MDE E S L E L L Audit, we had one from MDE this year, we had zero findings, everything went how it's supposed to go. Last year, we were placed on the Targeted Support Intervention List by MDE for having the bottom five percent scores in, for our special education subgroup on the M-Step Assessment. When you guys get this, if you click on it, there's a letter from MDE says that we are no longer on that list. I do want to share with you guys the Summer Discovery Grant, if you can click on that, Travis. So this year's Summer Discovery Grant, we were able to secure, drum roll, please. Thank you. Is it going to load? Oh, if you got it on, Travis, or maybe? I need to see the tabs. Oh, the budget summary? I want to hear it. Yep. Five hundred twenty-four thousand dollars for Summer Discovery, and I want to break, show you guys how we allocated the funding. One of the things that we are able to do is pay for staff, a lot of summer school staff members and other districts are getting paid forty-five dollars an hour, so we were able to be competitive with our pay. In addition, we were able to create some social media campaigns, we were able to allocate twenty-five thousand for supplies and curriculum, equipment to host the after-school program. And in, in the staffing, I do want to point out that for the personnel, we are allocating thirty thousand dollars towards students, so we're hiring sixteen students to work for the summer program, and it's kind of like just telling our high school students, like, thank you for being the student that you are, and they are giving back to our elementary students, so we are really excited about that. Also, usually we have to pay about thirty thousand dollars a year for transportation because this grant, we are able to write off transportation into the grant, and most grants, you can take a certain percentage of indirect costs, which will go straight to our general funds, so we are putting seventy-eight thousand into our general funds for the indirect cost. So this grant is something that's not only going to help our students in terms of math and literacy proficiency, but it's also going to give our students, our staff, and our families a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to have a great time during the summer. So that's Summer Discovery, and then I do want to point out how much we have accomplishments. If you look at total grant earnings in twenty-four, twenty-five, so in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four, those amounts are so large because those years we have ESTER funds. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, that was the first year we did not have ESTER funds, and we were able to bring in five, five million dollars in grants. So that money is money that we're able to put back in our students and to give them the education that they need and they deserve. And of those grants, if you click on fiscal year twenty-five, please, so that just breaks down where all the grant money came from, so if you ever want to just, if you have time, just go through each line, item by item, you can see where the funding comes from. And the green, if you go down, in terms of general funds, those are the funds that we go back, that goes back into the classroom, and our Director of Food Service was able to secure one million dollars in food service grants, so it really, we are really an amazing team that really goes out and do any and everything for the district. And last but not least, I do want to point out that when I first came to Madison as a principal four years ago, our eighth grader, our ninth graders were going into pre-algebra. So if you have a ninth grader going into pre-algebra, that means that individual is not going to take Algebra II into their senior year. Algebra II is on the SAT in which they take their junior year. So we're not giving our kids, we were not giving our kids access to curriculum that they need to be successful on the test. So this year, we are excited to announce, was the first year we have eighth graders actually earning Algebra I credit, they come to the high school in the morning, and we bus them over back to the middle school for second hour. So these are the kids that's going to be on that trajectory to take calculus, so they can earn the AP credit. So to not have Algebra I offered to ninth graders, to being able to offer Algebra I to eighth graders is a huge movement in our academics, and that's what we need to make sure that the world knows, that we are giving kids access to be great beyond their capacity, and that's what we want to do, and make sure we have an education environment for all students. So, before we move on to academic data, so the evaluation is based off of two components, eighty percent is academic, we don't have to click on that one yet, and then, no, eighty percent is the tool, and twenty percent is academic, I'm going to let Pam take over, so I won't be biased in explaining how to rate them.
So on this sheet in the packet, you're going to go back through all of your ratings, and then you're going to just circle which one you had rated her for, then at number two, you're going to take average, and then you're going to circle one of those four for your overall rating on the, just on the performance evaluation tool, and then you'll hang on to this, and then we'll go on to the data side. So from each sheet onto this one page, page ten.
I'm going to ask before we do that, we have in the past done strict ratings, and we've also done intermediate.
The point fives?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No, I'm going to say no.
I just want everyone to, we have the ability to do that. What is the wish of the group? I can change mine either way.
Can I make a comment about the tool? So this tool now is strict ratings, so there's no in-between, even though I want some point fives, it's strict.
Okay, fair enough. I, I just know that we were told we could in the past, and so I did not want to leave that. Ready, that makes some difference in what I do? Don't let me do the math.
Me?
Yeah.
It's not bad. I just felt like when we did the point fives, we got bullied in the scores that we weren't comfortable with, so like if I said a three, but everybody else said a four, remember it was like, well, could you go at least a three-point-five? And I'm like, no. But I think is what I think. You have to think of it more of exemplary or effective. Right, like above and beyond the job, or did the job?
We have to go over them still.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to go over them individually, or do you just want me to collect them and read the responses?
Collect them and average out the responses.
We, we've done both, so I didn't know. I don't care what we want to do. I have, what is the wish of the board? I can just simply go through them, which is absolutely prime and acceptable according to the rules. Just don't put your name on the paper.
Are you going to, are you going over number two? Or she goes over all of them? So what will happen is she'll take all of those from each person and average them, so like, i-if somebody did like four-three, four-three, she'll add those up, divide by six.
Okay.
You only, yeah, they're going to need that other sheet for the next one.
Has number six on the back, sorry. Superintendent Perry, you're going to want all of these eventually, because you're one of the comments.
Yeah, we'll see that.
Yeah.
Cindy, you're just doing two. So each of you should have figured out, based on what you scored for one, two, three, four, five, six, where your overall rating is, and then President Holder will just average it based on what was selected in number two. Yes.
Campbell just needs a couple of minutes.
Do we have a collection spot then for the rest of these so that President, our first Superintendent Perry to gather comments?
I still have one more section to present on academic data. So if you can hold on to it until I present that, that way you can write those comments on there too. Thanks.
It didn't seem like six. It's four, good four. Okay. I thought I heard you decided to.
Just give feedback.
Got it. Perfect.
I wait for Rebecca so I can do the.
Get those back so I can put them in my comments.
To you so you can find yours. Because there's not names on them, so I would have no idea.
I can tell you whose words.
Oh.
Their writing.
Okay.
I used up all of the space on the other ones. His writing. That's a very unique, you know, very clear writing.
You'd be nice. You're a math teacher. You're a math teacher.
That's a different, right? It's different.
Yes.
Not right. And I think it's gotten worse with the typing and stuff. Oh my God. But I can solve an equation neatly.
Well, we're all math people. Yes, and I feel like you've had to solve a lot of equations.
Every time we have a crowd, I'm like, Pam, can you fill this out? So we're going to talk about that. Just, just, just remember what you, what the final rating was for everyone.
I wrote that here. Need to be the cheerleader? Alrighty. Thank you for coming back and thank you for helping in that math program. They, I have a five-year-old that teaching him with parent games. Ten plus ten, ten plus five, we play what cannot be called 21 in the household. We.
Four times four, four, eight, yes. No, don't do that.
I never, no one ever taught me the finger thing.
Oh, the nines?
For nines? I did that when I was in school.
My nephews were like.
It's like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
I'm like, what is that?
Still do that once in a while. I'll be like, wait, what is that? Oh, no, I have a memory.
And then we were never in Great Lakes. My brother says the word home. I'm like, what are you talking about? He's like, Ontario, Michigan, Erie.
Acronym, sorry.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
The numbers always end up.
I didn't learn that either. I was probably 60 before I knew it was fourth grade. I had an Australian exchange, exchange teacher. Because he came here and taught our fourth graders and our fourth grade teacher from there. And Mr. Malcolm Chesworth.
I've never heard of it.
He was a dog. Him and his wife lived on the next street from us. So you saw them all the time. I had a picture of him and his wife. For teaching my five-year-old grandson to tell time. He wants to desperately, but he doesn't have relevance.
He's got to learn to count by fives first.
Well, and he can do part of that. But relevance in like seven o'clock is TV time. Seven thirty is bedtime. You know, so some of them he knows. But it's looking at the clock, he can read a digital clock. It's six o'clock, grandma. What does that mean? And a watch when we could figure out how he could tell time. We are back in from our timeout. And we are going to continue with the second part of this before we add all of the scores. So.
So the second part is on student growth and assessment data, which is page 11. So the first thing I want to talk about is assessment ratings for the superintendent. So I'm going to go backwards instead of student growth. So assessment ratings is based off of how students did on the M-Step exam, which is the proficiency exam. This data reflects the proficiency exam from 23, 24 because the data for 25, 26 has not been released. So if we click on this, basically more than 50% of our students show growth in the indicators that we track. And so what I have here for you is a chart that talks about how our students performed on the math assessment. Can you zoom in just a little? I'm sorry. One fifty? Yeah. So for the math assessment for 20, 23, 24, the green represents the change. So if you look at it from third grade, from 22, 23 to 23, 24, we had a 42% increase in the number of students proficient, proficient in math. So green highlights the incidents where we have increased in proficiency. And I am totally transparent. If you notice in grade six, there was a huge decline. So that's something we need to look at as a building as to what happened, as well as in grade nine and grade 11. So out of those indicators, we had one, two, three, four. Six areas of growth for math. So then we go to ELA. And once again, proficiency is only assessed in grades three through 11. So ELA, we had a huge increase in fourth grade and seventh grade and as well as in 10th and 11th grade. We were mentioned in the Oakland County Superintendent, we did a data dive on proficiency and growth. Madison District was one of the schools highlighted because we had a huge growth in the 11th grade on SAT, so.
Seven, like for fourth grade.
Oh.
Twelve point seven to 29.7. You'll think, oh, that's only 17. You explain why that's 134.
So the 134% is the difference from the previous year. So if you think 100% will mean that we got the same amount. So that means in 22, 23, if we had 12.7% to be at 100%, that means we stayed the same, we'll be at 12.7. But we not only stayed the same, we added on top of it. So the 134% of 12.7, that's why it's so much.
Question. Just D Dutch. Did we have any significant curriculum changes between those years?
So for the high school, four years ago when I came here, we didn't have any math or ELA curriculum. As a district, as a team, we adopted, we did a curriculum adoption where we had teachers participate. We looked at three different curriculums and we just started implementing study scenes. One of the things that we did have in terms of high school changes that the way the assessment is designed, so that may have contributed to the change, but on the elementary level, the only curriculum change that we had is that we started introducing number corners, which is through the 23H grant. And we're just starting to get that going. So sometimes when you implement new curriculum, you do see a dip for the first year or two. But that's why when we, as a district, when we look at achievement data, you look at it from two lenses. One is what the state is expecting in terms of proficiency. And then the other is the growth data. What are we doing to move our kids forward? And then if you click on science, science is only assessed in fifth, eighth and 11th grade. So that is a percent change there. In our science department on the high school level, we are, there's a lot of changes with different standards and the state is still trying to figure out what's going on. So we are going to try to revamp our science to make it more experimental based as opposed to textbook based. So we have one area of growth there. And then social studies. Our 11th grade social studies really did well on the M-Step exam as well as our fifth grade. And then we definitely need the, we declined from 22, 23. So if you go back to sum it up, if you go back to the evaluation presentation, there was a possibility of 20 different, 24 areas that we should have shown, we could have shown growth in terms of proficiency. And then of the 24, we showed growth in 13 of the areas. And when I say areas, that means like third grade math, third grade reading, so on and so forth. So that is our M-Step data. If you guys want to take a moment and give a rating on student growth for assessment rating for superintendent. And then I will go into the first one, which is student growth and assessment rating for teachers. You're on to page 11. Page 11.
Page 11. We're going to do this one. We're going to do this, but we're doing this first. And half?
More than half. Well, 50%, yeah, more than 50%.
When I was in the district back in the day, we always had low scores on. From all day long and going to switching classes every hour.
I do want to add, if, I know you guys are writing, but if you guys can just listen to this one point about sixth graders, that's where we lose our fifth graders. Our fifth graders that are higher performing, when they leave the elementary school, they tend to go to a different building. So we have the higher performance students that we have built up since kindergarten leave our district, which is one of the things that we're doing this year is trying to keep those kids here and give them a curriculum that's going to accelerate them so that in eighth grade, they can take the Algebra I class and be prepared for it. But that's usually where we hit the hardest in sixth grade.
Yeah. They don't let us disseminate like our kids that have been here all the time, the new kids that come in. So I guess people just need to understand that. That isn't something we can just say. The kids that have been here years are doing X.
Yeah.
Now, a student who's just come to us though, we will not be counted, it will not count against us for the first year when they test because they don't have academic year with us. But then the second year they would count against us.
So the sixth year they would not be taken in if they were a starting junior high with us? Sixth grade, those numbers wouldn't be included?
No. They'd be included, but they wouldn't count against us. So they would be in our data, but then when it, when it shows what's reported like to the state, that data would be different.
So what would our data show us for sixth graders? How would that be different?
Most of our sixth graders come from us. They're the kids that come from elementary school, but Pam is referencing like if we get a new sixth grader from a different district, like from, if we get a Pontiac sixth grader. So most of our sixth graders come, the sixth graders that we have come from the elementary school.
Right. Question. We see the numbers for the growth and the achievement. But what is the state looking at? When, when you go to a website and you're looking up, what's the state spitting out?
Are you saying like these are our numbers, those include 100% of our sixth graders? But you said that if it's our first year here, it won't count at the state level. So what is, these are our numbers, but what is the state numbers if they remove the kids that don't count?
Who are our numbers from the state?
These are the state numbers.
I pulled the data.
Is that what you were asking?
Yes.
Okay.
I obviously didn't ask it clearly, but that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
What's most important is, and this is what teachers' evaluations are based on, is growth. Is how do you move students? Because we have to realize because of the transient population, we're going to have a lot of kids that are not at grade level. So teacher evaluations and building administration evaluations, 20% is based off of growth. So I want to have a conversation about growth data. So for growth, we look at, I think it's just the top. Yep. So this chart represent as a district in each grade, how or what percent of students met or exceeded their NWEA growth? So when a student comes in on the first month or two, they have the fall assessment. And based off of the fall assessment, NWEA predicts how far this student should grow throughout the year. So if you look at this and if you can zoom out and we can just look at the chart. So the reason why you only see grades K through seven is because like I said earlier, for the eight through 12 assessment, we use Horizon. So if you notice, the math growth has really went up. But if you look at sixth grade, once again, that's that class that we had a vacancy in, that grade kind of did not achieve its growth. So math really went up. And then first grade literacy, we kind of hadn't, it went down. Second grade, we did not meet it. Third grade, in terms of literacy, we did not achieve our growth goal. Fourth, fifth, sixth and seventh met it.
Discussions that you will have over the summer or at the end of the school year to devise a plan to address?
So next week I have evaluations with individual principals and this is where we look at it. I do want to point out the way NWEA works is that, so let's say for example, we have 40 kids and when the students start the assessment, five are at grade level. Those kids are pulled out of this percentage because NWEA feels like they're already at grade level. So they don't get a protected growth. So when we have these conversations as building principals and superintendent, we're going to talk about, hey, what do we need to do to move those kids forward? And building principals do have this conversation with teachers during their evaluation. So we have three levels of assessment three times. So from winter to, no, from. So from winter to, no, from fall to winter, they have that conversation with the building teachers just the same.
So. Trustee Thompson. So i- if I'm understanding you right, all of these students are, were low grade level?
All of these students met their projected growth goal. So based off the assessment, the first time they took the assessment to the third time, which is in the spring, these students perform how NWEA predicted they would perform. And then if you go down to composite score, so in order to look at eighth through, eight grades, eight through eleven, in terms of eight through eleven, if you talk about the PSAT, this is the Horizon test. So basically when we look at PSAT and college board assessment, we look at scores. It's, it's crazy how the conversation is, but it's just how it is. So in order to be quote unquote proficient on SAT or PSAT, you have to reach a certain score. So on Horizon test, we did show growth overall in the overall score for grades eight, nine, ten, and eleven. But let's talk about what it looks like when we dive into it. For ELA, this is a conversation I'm gonna have with the principals. For grades eight and nine, I mean, eight and ten, their scores went down for ELA. But there is a disclaimer. This is like a whole class. College board assessments have changed this year. In the past, proficiency was based off of how many specific questions you have correct. In the present, proficiency is based off of how many specific questions you have correct in the hard, medium, or easy category. So we're probably gonna have to have a study session. So for example, if a student get more questions correct in a harder category, get more harder questions correct than easier questions correct, their score is gonna go higher. So I don't have a lesson on it for you right now, but I'll have to figure it out. So these scores, so for example, if I took the PSAT practice test nine and the first assessment, I had all the easy questions right. But then the second assessment, I didn't get a lot of easy questions right, but I got a lot of hard questions right. That score can be the same. It's just a new technique that we don't know how to teach it.
They get rewarded for the harder questions?
Yes.
So it's kind of like they're, they, um, weigh more, they, they're valued.
Right. So if you notice, we did go down a little for ELA, but when you click on math, we show growth in all grades, eighth, ninth, ten, and eleven. So when we go back to the presentation, um, in terms of, it shouldn't say students, so that's a typo. We have ten out of twelve incidents where we show growth, where students met their growth goal in math. And in ELA, we only had five out of twelve incidents where students. If we're doing something right in math, we just have to figure out what's going on in the ELA and the literacy department. Any questions? I know that's confusing. How do you teach them to like to read?
Yeah.
We did try the, this year we tried the pledge. So we asked during March, March reading month, families commit to reading every day with their kid. And we had a raffle where one family won tickets to the carnival. So we did have about ten families entered the raffle, so that was something that we've never done before. I think we just have to continue to push it and just implement strategies and not give up and see if we have.
For the most part, we can love it or we don't love it. But.
Or you just haven't found love.
Or you just haven't found the right thing that you love to learn about. That's why I was just wondering, I don't know how building principals can just inject them with that appreciation. If we find that shop, we should buy a few.
Yeah. Maybe we can get rich if we figure it out. Any questions on, um, growth assessment or data or?
Take your two, those two scores and make it one. Combine and, and figure out what your final score is. And then Cindy, if you could then on page twelve, take your average from all, from the four evaluations, put that number there. So obviously if it's exemplary, it'd be four, effective would be three, two, one. Or three, two, one, sorry, three, three, two, one is the way it is.
Mine for me.
No. No, no, for everybody. Everybody.
Yeah. Okay. This is the one you're gonna turn into Pam. Once you get everyone's final rating, you're gonna give us a final rating for the performance tool as well as for the student growth assessment, whether it's exemplary, effective development, and needed support.
Thirds. Oh. We're not doing. So explain the three and four.
Okay. So if you look here at number two on page twelve, it says, check the rating by the board for each of these categories. So for the performance evaluation tool, the overall rating from all four board members, you would circle one of those, what the average was. And then you would do the same thing for student growth and assessment, whatever the average of all four equals.
So you're right here on number two. Number two and number.
I have only two of them.
Only has two.
Oh.
So you have to take the average of all four.
Yes. Tell Pam what the average is.
Did you guys turn the filters on? So exemplary or and effective are the same score?
Yes.
That makes zero sense.
I know.
It needs to always be four, three, two, one.
Yes, so the new evaluation end rating, so the, the summative, the, the final rating has gone from a four-point rubric to a three-point rubric. Yes, it makes very little sense, but.
But the tool has to remain a four-point rubric because it is scientifically created.
Yes, and we can't change that because it would then, um, the viability of the, the performance tool would, it would be, I don't wanna say broken, but you know, we wouldn't be meeting what the expectations are. Is that we're using this tool in its form as, as it's been developed and approved.
Okay, so I'm going to read you the scores so you can do them.
Okay. So for the performance evaluation tool, the final rating was?
Exemplary.
So that would be three. And then we would, by eight, which is twenty-four, okay?
And then we had, did I miss one? Uh, the four, four, three. But only have three schools.
Did you do yours?
Four, four, three, four.
So that would be three, times two is six, so then the final score would be thirty. Then we flip it over thirty, twenty-three to thirty is effective, so her final rating would be effective.
Yeah, twenty-four is on the top line.
Yes, twenty-four and then six.
Have to sign this? I think I do.
I'm gonna sign this one.
You have to circle the back?
No, Pam is gonna fill it out and she'll sign.
Okay. What is weird to me that it was a three and a five?
There's only three ratings now in MDE. There's no such thing as highly effective. So what MDE did was it took effective and highly effective and made it into one category. And then this is the.
So why do they even let them be choices?
Because we can't change the tool.
This is the one you have to sign.
Sorry, President Holder, that's how the teachers eval is everywhere in the state of Michigan. That's exactly what's happening. So.
Because our, our very effective teachers aren't getting recognized.
Oh, correct, they're now effective, that is correct. Not fair, that's for everybody. So it's just fair, not fair, it's just the way it is.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
You know what?
It just takes away someone who goes above and beyond.
Okay. I want to return everybody's sheets that want them back.
Cindy, can I just update this just so we can have a good comment as well?
That's mine. That's me, that's my other one.
To them, then their comments can't be read.
The, we gotta put it in our packet, get the whole packet if we want to, because there's notes everywhere. At least mine is.
This is the one she's signing a date? She's gotta date it.
Okay.
If you guys just pass it to me, I'll figure it out. If you have notes, I'll go through it.
Two.
Six, two. I just wanted to show that we did it within the time that it was supposed to.
Thank you. Some of our comments are probably, I would hope to be effective.
Thank you.
Okay, if that means.
That's mine.
I have so much. Sirs and committee meetings. I'm ready. HRC.
Yeah, there's, um, a lot, and I know everybody, I send the updates to everybody so that they know. So I'm not gonna go over all of that, but just for the public. Um, there is a really, uh, a large bill passed federally, um, that has, uh, one point five trillion dollars in federal spending reductions, seven billion dollar cut to Medicaid. And this is so, um, this is a big deal because I don't know if you guys are, but our ancillary staff bills Medicaid for services they do, and they're not going to allow that anymore, which will take millions and millions and millions of dollars away. Um, in this, actually for Michigan, it would cut forty to fifty million dollars annually. Um, and that's huge. So unfortunately we, that goes, typically goes to general fund. I don't know how it does here, but it's often, it goes to general fund. So that's a big deal. Um.
Would they then build the insurance directly?
No, I, I get the impression there, it just wouldn't happen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's a.
They were just taking the school out of the equation.
Mm-mm, it's a big deal. Um, it looks like there might be some cost, cost shifts to states for SNAP, which is food assistance as well. Um, and, uh, Medicaid cuts could cost forty to fifty million dollar annually in Michigan, plus twenty million dollars in new compliance costs affecting services, um, like school nursing and mental health, which would be your social work. Um, psychologists, uh, a lot of special ed, uh, you can bill for evaluations, which takes a ton of time. Um, and that there also looks like to be five billion dollars in federal tax credit scholarships program that would support private and homeschool tuition, diverting public funds from K-12 schools. Um, and even in states like Michigan that actually ban private aid, uh, public aid for private schools, uh, which, just a sidebar, I have a question. Then do they have to deal with IDEA and, you know, be compliant with all that? That is, that would be interesting. Um, also repeal of clean energy tax credits that could raise HVAC and solar upgrades by eight to twelve percent and changes to federal student loans, um, which doesn't really affect us that much. But, um, Governor Whitmer had condemned the bill warning an eight hundred million dollar state budget shortfall and raising concerns, um, over the rating of the school aid fund to cover general expenses. So there's a lot of big things happening federally. As far as the state is concerned, there are a lot of bills like on deck, but nothing. I'll let you guys know if something else comes of that.
HR EC. Um, so we are in June, June is LGBTQ month. Um, we also have the, uh, citywide, uh, Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, June fourteenth, at Civic Center Park. Um, and then there will be a flag raising at City Hall on June nineteenth at eight, I believe it's eight or eight-thirty AM. You can go on Facebook and go to the H R E C, uh, Facebook page or the Madison Heights Juneteenth Festival page and find out information on either of those.
Committee. AKA, and, um, we had agreed after going over the information to send out to the board a snapshot of our finance picture of that particular day, which we then, all of us went over. So that was more or less what we covered. Is anything else that you wanna call?
Sorry, yeah, we posted the, um, the expenses and they flew the payroll as of five sixteen, so.
Uh, enrollment committee.
Yes, we did, didn't we? It was Ms. Perry, me, and.
I didn't get an invite.
Yeah. We did the Zoom meeting, don't you remember? And her, her son was there, um.
Oh, yeah, we did have the Zoom meeting, yeah.
I didn't get an invite.
Um, check my calendar, I think you guys, it should be on the. Can we come back to next meeting?
Yeah, it's totally fine, I just.
Um, trustee Dutch, you're open.
Great, as the school year comes to a conclusion, I would just like to remind our students that learning never concludes. So the mark of the very best scholars is the asking of questions. So spend your summer days asking plenty of questions. Go on adventures by reading lots of books. Congratulations to the class of twenty-twenty-five. I hope the world is ready because on Saturday, Madison released into the world a class full of powerful learners hungry for success. In May, I was fortunate enough to tour the district and meet the incredible heartbeat of the district, our educators. Um, their passion is undeniable and left me eager to hear more from them. Trustees Harp, Malcomine Taylor, and I will be at Bigby on Eleven Mile Road, Saturday, June fourteenth, from nine till eleven. And we would welcome you all, all district stakeholders to come and share so that's students, staff, parents, and community members. Um, I hope to see the board continue exploring fiscally responsible usage and divisions of our buildings. And I would also be open to exploring a community volunteer initiative over the summer that would allow us to paint the lockers at Wilkinson Middle School.
I mean, do I have to follow that? Good lord.
You brought it to us?
I know. It was way too polished. Um, mine is not that polished, but I would just, once again, like to just congratulate our three retirees. Danielle, she's spent a lifetime in Madison schools. What an incredible, I mean, just, it just made my life. And, um, Ms. Jabo, who spent thirty-two years, um, just in grace. I, um, can't pronounce her last name, but I was very impressed with all of them and it was such a joy to see, uh, all of our students of the.
Uh, all of our students of the month, of course, is one of my favorite times of the board because it's just wonderful. Carnival was amazing, we raised a lot of money. Thank you to all of you. Um, graduation was impressive and wonderful. I enjoyed every moment and I can't wait to do it again next year. It was, it was lovely. Okay, I'll be quick, but I have a story. And it's a story about, um, how people in our district care about our students. I was coming into a board meeting, the, the last one. Um, and I heard someone from their car ask a student on a bike, like, what are you doing? Why are you not home, like, like doing your homework? Why are you, why are you out and about on the streets? And I was, I, I thought it was their mother. Like, I genuinely thought, because it was like said with such love and just like, what, now you know you need to be at home doing your homework. It was Superintendent Perry to, to one of our students. And I was like, what love? What care? What, like, just, like going out of her way, she knew this student. She was just, and she was able to talk to him like a mother, because I genuinely thought it was his mom. And so I just want to say, good job. Yeah.
Chambliss, follow that.
Um, I want to say congratulations to all the employees of the month and students of the month. Um, I want to say the most deeply and sincere thank you and gratitude I have for the staff that are retiring. Um, they've taught many of my children. And, um, Ms. Slidinsky still checks on my daughters who graduated class of 22 and class of 23. Um, before she even says hello to me, the first thing she says is, how is Natalie? How is Ashlyn? And just the most beautiful, amazing voice. And it's just like this voice of a family member who loves you. Um, so Ms. Slidinsky is unofficially one of our family. Um, so thank you to all the staff that are retiring for giving decades to a district that wasn't always easy to work at, wasn't always fun to work at, but loved you and will deeply miss you. Congratulations to all of the class of 2025, all of our graduates. Um, you did something I couldn't do when you graduated high school. Um, I think it's a beautiful thing. You guys come out with your caps and gowns and you sit in the chair and you wait for your name. And at the end, the look on your faces of so much pride and happiness is just beautiful to see. Um, congratulations to the parents of those students um, for supporting your children and being there and, you know, being a rock that they can rely on. High school is not easy, but to put at minimum 13 years into something and to get to that day is a huge accomplishment. Um, thank you to all the staff throughout the whole district who helped these young adults prepare and get ready to graduate. Um, a deep, uh, thank you and sincere gratitude to Ms. Halchowski for helping these students pick college, pick the military, pick trade school, or a career post-graduation. She one-on-one sits down with every senior and makes sure that their path to graduation is as smooth as possible. She brings in, I don't even know what the count was this year, but it's easily 100 university and colleges for these kids to go to and tour. They come here, they do virtual, um, tours and things like that. She has brought so many opportunities to these kids in preparation for their graduation. And I don't know if we would see as many graduates as we do without her. And for helping secure 5.6 million in scholarships, which for our smallest class in a long time, that is insanely phenomenal. Um, I was at prom recently and it was a beautiful event. The kids looked amazing. The staff that put it on looked like completely different people there. They were dancing, they were laughing, it was so fun. Um, and I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for putting on such an amazing thing for the kids. And I'm really excited for the eighth grade events coming up because they're having a dance at the Venetian. What? That is insane. I don't know how we did that or how Ms. Jones did that. But this district continues to amaze me. Seven, eight, however many years in that we've been here because you continuously bring these kids new things and new opportunities. And it's not just year in, year out. So thank you to everybody who did that as well. Thank you.
Okay, I can't follow any of those three. So I'm just going to say ditto.
I would just like to say to everyone, have a safe summer. Even though we will be back in the months of, uh, July. Well, one more in June and then July and August. We won't see many of you for a couple of months. Um, the, the, just to kind of piggyback on what Tristi Malcapan Taylor said. I've been to multiple events with, um, our superintendent. And I don't know of many that you haven't had an ex-student. Just here at our, uh, penny, our commitment ceremony, you were, um, representative, was one of her students.
Mm-hmm.
So it is, it is not uncommon to see her at a public event and have people come up to her and thank her for what she has done for them in their careers. And, um, that's a big deal. I, I don't see that often, I haven't seen that often. But I've seen it often with you. So, um, yeah. And thank you to all of our building principals. I know, um, our school of choice gives them, um, challenges. But every year it's different. They don't even know what they're receiving in until the first day of school, when they can kind of get an academic sense of what students need, what support, or, or who doesn't. So I don't want anyone to think that that goes unrecognized. Um, it's, it is a big deal and we do recognize it. And we know with our scores, we all have to improve. But I know if there can be many different grade level differences. And, um, our, our staff as a whole are working very hard to graduate them at grade level with prospects for their adult future. So with that, just thank you. Um, I need one more motion.
President Holder?
Just De Chambliss.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I will support.
Trustee Thompson supporting any discussion. Hearing that, we'll call vote please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Kristara Malcapan Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Good night, thank you for anybody who has attended. Thank you.